Good evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock and I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Please help me welcome the Peaks Chapel Elementary School Pandas and their esteemed principal, Siobhan Beckett. And Ms. Beckett, would you please come forward and introduce your inspirational speakers tonight, please?
Good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Rockdale County Board of Education, Dr. Oates, the Cabinet members, and all of our guests. We thank you for inviting us out this evening, Peaks Chapel Elementary. We do have two of our fourth grade scholars here to bring the inspiration to you. We have Kelsey Anderson and Noel Edwards, but we do want to thank their awesome teacher, Ms. Tiffany Slaughter. Ms. Slaughter has worked diligently to prepare our scholars to bring the inspiration to you today, so we thank her. Y'all give her a hand. Say that, Ms. Slaughter. All right, we want to thank their parents for bringing them out and supporting them this evening. We also want to, I want to thank my assistant principals, Mrs. Haiti Daniel Knight and Dr. Tiana Holmes for being here to support us as well this evening. So we hope you all enjoy. Come on up, Kelsey and Noel.
And as Kelsey and Noel come forward, Kelsey and Noel, when you finish your inspirational message, would you please lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Greetings to the superintendent, board members, school leaders, parents, educators, and all the others in attendance this evening. Thank you for allowing us to do the inspiration for this evening's board meeting. On the behalf of Peaks Chapel Elementary and Principal Beckett, I am the Reverend Dr. Martha Luther King Jr., and this is my darling wife.
I am Mrs. Cora Scott King, but my husband affectionately calls me Coy.
On Monday, January 15th, the world paused to celebrate my life and my legacy. The theme for 2024 is "It Starts With Me," shifting the cultural climate through study and practice of heinous nonviolence.
Most of you already know that my husband Martin lived and breathed the principles of nonviolence. At the King Center, we define nonviolence as a love-centered way of thinking, speaking, acting, and engaging that leads to personal, cultural, and societal transformation.
My wife and I believe in the power and the opportunities that the education affords us. I once said that the thing, that the function of education therefore is to teach one to think critically and to think intensively, but education which starts with efficiency may prove to be the greatest menace to society. The most dangerous criminal may be the man gifted with reason but with no morals.
You also said that intelligence is not enough intelligence plus character that is the goal of true education. Dr. King and I would now share two of the most important nonviolent principles with you. It is our hope that you incorporate these principles into your everyday lives. Principle one, nonviolence is a way of life for courageous people. It is not, it is not a method for cowards. It does resist. It is, it is active resistance to evil. It is aggressive spiritually, mentally, and emotionally.
Principle five, nonviolence chooses love instead of hate. Nonviolence resists violence of the spirit as well as the body. Nonviolence love is spontaneous, unselfish, and creative.
We lived our lives by these principles. That is why we were able to choose love over hate when we were being harshly mistreated all those years ago.
It is our hope that you will continue to learn and apply all of the nonviolence principles. Remember this year's theme, "It Starts With Me." This has been Kelsey Anderson as Dr. Martha Luther King Jr.
And Noel Edwards as Mrs. Cora Scott King.
Thank you for allowing us to share.
I pledge.
Okay, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Noel and Kelsey. I'd like to say I met Kelsey a few weeks ago before Christmas. He was sworn in as his fourth grade president of his class. And so I'm proud to see you here tonight. And Noel, we're glad you're here too. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda presented?
Second Akita Palmer.
A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Ms. North and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to amend the agenda as presented to move item one of the new business consent agenda to the new business discussion agenda.
Okay, a motion has been made by Mr. Kenyon to move item one to item two, is that correct?
No ma'am, item one of the new business consent.
With the new business agenda.
A move to move that line item to the new business discussion agenda.
Do we have a second to his motion? All in favor? All opposed? The motion did not carry. Thank you. Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Can I get a second?
A second.
A motion has been made to approve the agenda by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Have three opposed and four approved. Thank you. Next, we welcome the Salem High School Seminoles and Dr. Jarvis Price as they provide the school presentation. Welcome, Dr. Price.
Hey, good evening. Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oates, the Board of Education and the Cabinet. And so, and again, I am Dr. Price, principal of Salem High School. And so the mission of Salem High School really focuses on making sure that we meet the social, emotional needs of students, but definitely making sure that all leaders are, making sure that all students are prepared to be the leaders of tomorrow. We really want to invest so that all students are at the forefront in, in the school system in Rockdale and nationwide. The vision for the students at Salem is we, we truly want our students to be advocates. Our students should advocate for themselves and others. The core principle at Salem is if the students can verbalize their needs, 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 and desires and wants, then those students can be successful and because they will always get the resources that they need. Over the last eighteen months, the motto for Salem has been a commit to the standard. And so the standard for us is a set of expectations that we are committed to and that commitment is unwavering. The first, and the first commitment is teaching and learning. Every teacher in the building must use higher strategies. That is, that is the most effective practices in a move to an achievement. The second commitment is that teachers must use data to drive instruction. We are going to target interventions and to make sure that we are maximizing the potential of every student. Third is everybody in the building must truly believe that every student at Salem can achieve at the highest levels possible. We are competing with every high school in Rockdale and high schools outside of Rockdale. The goal and premise is that we are premier and we are second to none. That is the expectation that must be held by every teacher, every student in that building. The second component is relationships. And so we want to make sure that our parents know and our students know that we have a genuine care. And so the expectation for teachers is, is that you should recognize if there's a change in that student. If that student is in your class ninety minutes every day, we should recognize a changing mood. And we should recognize if their clothes are different. And we should recognize if their spirit is not their typical spirit. That's what we mean by relationships. It's not about trying to get on their level. It's about recognizing that they have value. And so we're going to value every student at Salem. A component of it is that teachers at Salem are expected to make positive phone calls to parents because every parent deserves to hear the good works that their students are doing at Salem each and every day. Positivity breeds a connectedness. And so we want a school culture that's connected and where every student feels valued. And then lastly, is a safe learned environment. The pledge and promise that we make to every parent, every student, every teacher is the school will function in a manner that's conducive to learning. Chaos will not happen at Salem High School. And the expectation is that students walk through the door, students take a seat, and students engage in quality instruction. The expectation is, is that that teacher will teach from bell to bell every day. We will not cheat a student. A student will maximize their potential at Salem High School and because it's about collaboration. And then lastly, as administrators, we must be invested in our teachers, all students, and our parents. We should be visible and vigilant in, vigilant in every classroom and every school activity. If we want parents to buy in to us, we must buy into them and their students. And so that's the standard. That's the commitment that when you work at Salem High School or your student comes to Salem High School, we are committed to excellence. We are committed to that every student will maximize their potential and the achievement will be reflected. And so in terms of setting the standard, it's the last school year going into, going into this school year has been a very successful process and transition. The graduation rate increased by nine point six percent. And so this school year, well, last school year, and the graduate rate was eighty-five point four seven percent. That gain in graduation rate really is a reflection of parents, counselors, teachers, administrators, central office really investing in Salem and making sure that we had the appropriate supports. But most of all, it goes back to belief. It's really preaching and teaching to our students that you have the potential for greatness. It's about, it's about developing grit and making sure that you have a focus post-high school. And whether that's armed services and whether, and whether that's post-secondary and whether that's career, we find value in everything a student wants to do. That value is what led to the increase in graduation rate because what we preach to a parent. And what we preach to a parent each and every day is that diploma that you get from Salem High School is, is not a gift. It is something that your student did the work and they benefited from because that diploma has to mean something when it says Salem High School. The second piece is academics. And so it goes back to the standard of teaching and learning. The expectation that we truly engage in quality instruction and that we meet students where they are. That led to a increase on three of the four areas on, on a CCRPI. And so for algebra, we increased four point two eight percent. For biology, we increased. For biology, we increased roughly nine percent. And if US history, we increased roughly nine percent. And so again, the gains go back to the commitment from the teachers. And so if we empower teachers, if we treat them respectfully and value them, the benefits are what the students feel. We all perform better when we are happier at work and when you feel empowered at work. It's not about setting a low bar. It's about pushing every individual in the building to meet the highest expectation because families are sending us their students and so we have an obligation to give them the best education possible. And that's the push and that's the charge. And then the third piece is school culture. And so the three questions listed were three of the highest rated questions on the Georgia Student Health Survey. And so we're big on making sure that everyone in the building feels valued. And but that value is derived from the fact that we're setting, setting a high bar and students are reaching and stretching for that high bar. Teachers understanding, teachers understand the high expectation. And so when individuals speak of Salem, they speak of the great work that we're doing. They speak of the, speak, speak of how well our students are. That goes back to the school culture. And so teachers treat me with respect. That's critically important for us because we are going to ensure that every student maintains their dignity each and every day. Because we preach each and every day that a student may fall short today, but everyone is redeemable and because we all fall short at some point. And so we're going to invest in students. The second, it's the second one that's important is, is that students are treated fairly. Every student has to understand that the expectation is the same for every student in that building. And it's not certain pockets have certain, certain expectations and beliefs and others do not. It's a shared expectation amongst all students. And then the lastly, question fifteen is important and because we have invested and you'll see on the next slide, it being a school for no place to hate. And so we want every student that come to school and feel that they can be them genuine selves. There's no need to hide and because the culture that we create is that everyone is embraced. Everyone has value. Everyone can be their genuine self because we tell students it's difficult to wear a mask eight hours a day. Unmask and be you and you are accepted. And so part of that culture is this school year, we have participated in being a no place to hate school. And so the whole premise and goal is to build inclusivity and so that every student knows that they have value. And so the picture shows where the students at Salem High School, they signed the pledge. And so the pledge for no place to hate is, the first one is, I will seek to gain understanding of those who are different from myself. Number two is, I will speak out and against prejudice and discrimination. The third is, I will reach out to support those who are targets of hate. Number four is, I will promote and respect for people and help foster a, a prejudice-free school. Number five is, I believe that one person can make a difference. No person can be, no person can be an innocent bystander when it comes to opposing hate. Number six is, I recognize that respecting individual dignity and promoting intergroup harmony are the responsibilities of all students. And so ultimately for us, it goes back to the culture that we create is one of high expectations and the, and one of students being valued. I will continue to preach value because every student has to know that they matter. The next is athletes as leaders. So we partnered with the Georgia Department of Health and so our girls' basketball team and our football team went through training with mentors. And so the mentors are the girls' basketball coaches and Coach Coquett. And for football, it was Mr. Collins, the athletic director. And so the topics, the topics that they generally discuss in those sessions is really about student empowerment. But the most powerful one that the coaches reference is a section or topic called full and disclosure. Because the goal is, is that if students see issues of abuse, if students see issues of poverty, that students are willing to engage those individuals and, and make sure that those students have their appropriate support. And so for us, it's important that if students recognize or see abuse, that they're not silent and that those students are willing to report or, or be active in facilitating that person getting out of that situation. And so what we found powerful is, is that it's beneficial for young men to have that role model, to have that conversation. And then for my female students, for them to be aware of the resources and services available. And so that program in itself, we generally believe benefits school culture. Next is communities and schools. Communities and schools has been phenomenal for us. This is the second year of Communities and Schools. Mr. Daryl Vaughn is a site facilitator for us. And so one thing they do is, is they provide academic support. They can provide tutorials, bus services, they can provide ACT, SAT prep. But the biggest thing is, is that Mr. Vaughn can connect Salem High School with as many services and providers in the Rockdale area to support all students. The next piece is mentor and advocacy. Mr. Vaughn does a good job of running groups with targeted students. And so those students generally speaking come from the counselor or those students, students are self-selected because we always try to hire individuals who are visible and personable because kids will open up to individuals who they know have a genuine care and literally who is everywhere. Cafeteria, restrooms, football games, basketball games, you name it, Mr. Vaughn is present. That's been beneficial for us. And then the family support. And so it's been very cold the last few days. And so one great thing Mr. Vaughn has done is, is he started a clothing closet at Salem. And so we noticed students who didn't really have a heavy jacket, Mr. Vaughn was able to give those students jackets. When it poured and raining outside, he realized that students are still coming to school with Crocs on. Students are still wearing boots, that it's boots, boots that are now soaking wet. The teachers are alert to those students to recognize that that may be all that they have. They connect that student with Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Vaughn can provide those students with items from the clothing closet. And so it's really beneficial because it's targeting all students, but definitely the most at-risk students and Mr. Vaughn is able to provide that support. For families that may struggle with childcare or light bill or water bill, Mr. Vaughn has the ability to help families as needed on a select basis. And so for us, Communities and Schools has been powerful and that definitely benefited us on graduation rate. It definitely benefited us in terms of school culture. And Rockdale Bridges, and so Rockdale Bridges is part of the Twenty First Century Grant. It does a fantastic job at Salem. It gives students the opportunity to receive tutorials in reading and math. But most of all, to me, the most beneficial is it gives students the opportunity to engage in activities that traditionally they may not. They literally had the game truck last school year and so the kids got to play video games and the kids got to go to a farm and the kids got to go do go-karts. They go on college trips. I'm big on exposure and so students get the opportunity to see something outside of Rockdale. And so the biggest thing we push is if students are going to aspire for something different, they've got to see something different. And so Rockdale Bridges does an excellent job of making sure that all students have exposure to something different. The second piece that I love about Rockdale Bridges is they really geared towards STEM. And so students are really getting hands-on learning after school in fields that are very lucrative once they leave high school. And so we really are pushing critical thinking, but most of all, students are getting the services that they need to intervene, to keep them on track for graduation and, and to continue to help them beat, meet content mastery standards. And for recognition advocacy, and so Salem High School was number one in the state of registering, registering voters of age seventeen or older. And so we did win that recognition for Salem High School. And then for scholarship, Mr. Gaines is a former band director of Salem High School. And so he is now at Central State. And so he does a fantastic job of making sure that the seniors at high school in band and receive scholarships. And so Mr. Gaines came recently and so we had five Salem High School senior band members that each received a fifty thousand dollar scholarship and to go to Central State. And then for fine arts, and so Salem specialty is international business. But one of our things that we do pride ourselves on is, sells on is, is one, having the biggest band in Rockdale County. And by number two is really pushing the fine arts. And so our students that participated in one act, they did come in third place in that competition, but most of all, the, the fine arts programs are growing. And so we really are proud of those talented students and because Salem is more than international business, we do thrive in the arts. And whether it's band and whether it's drama and whether it's chorus, we are growing and thriving. It's, and so we do have the ability to service any student and student in Rockdale County schools that wants to attend Salem High School. And then lastly, this is the senior class and so the class of twenty twenty-four. And so ultimately what we do at Salem is about making sure that these individuals maximize our God-given potential and that these students have every opportunity to be successful and productive in Rockdale or the larger world because we are preparing them to think critically. They are, they are self-starters, but most of all, they will advocate for themselves and others. That's our big premise is because they attended Salem and because they advocate everywhere that they go, that, that place or personally is going to be better for meeting a Salem student. And so thank you.
I do have some comments for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Price, first I want to thank you for your presentation. Excellent. And I also want to give a shout out to Blake Gaines. He went to school with my brother and I remember when he was the band director over at Salem High School. Glad to see that he's reaching back out and taking care of his students he left behind. I also want to give a shout out to Samari Grant. He is a Scott, who is a basketball player over there and a student at Salem. This is his first year at Salem, but his second year in high school. And I received a message from his, his mother telling me how, how pleased that she is that her son is at Salem High School, that everything is going so well for him and that he is really thriving there. And so I want to let you know that your parents are speaking about the great work that you guys are doing over there and I just want to thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Dr. Price, before you leave the podium, I'll, I just want to, to underscore some fine data points you made. And, and, and I think everyone knows at this point that as a district, we like to, when we present data, of course, we make the data available, of course, to our board, to our staff. Obviously, it's available to the public through the, the websites from the GDOE and other sources. But we don't typically, when we're sharing data to the public, we talk about how we're doing by content, by area collectively. But I do, because you're the focus for presentation tonight, I do want to share, because not everyone may know this, but Salem High School had the single highest year gain in graduation rate in Rockdale County. And, and I think that warrants applause. You talked about the indicators, the CCRPI indicators, and you showed the increases in, in those indicators. On one very, very important indicator, closing the gap, which is where we closed the gap in achievement and performance between subgroups of students, Salem High School exceeded the state on that CCRPI indicator by a lot. And so that too warrants applause as well. And then of course, Salem High School re-entered, if you will, the AP Honor School list for, because for the last few years, our other two high schools have made that list, but in this past year, Salem High School has returned to, to its recognition as an AP Honor School. And lastly, I would say, because we track disciplinary incidents as well, and I know we recently had an end of year presentation on our discipline data, we've seen the, we have seen reductions across all of our high schools. And we also saw increases in graduation rate across all of our high schools. I'm just underscoring some points because you're our focal point for tonight, but we've seen our greatest rate of reduced disciplinary incidents at Salem High School as well. So thank you for your leadership. And I know it's a team effort. Thank you and thank all of your leadership team to include your teachers, not just your administrative leaders. So thanks, Dr. Price.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And Dr. Price, I also like giving you your kudos. I've visited Salem many times since I've been over in that quarter and the parents are really applauding the great work that you are doing over there. So keep it up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, next, April Fallon, the Director of Community and Student Support and members of the Rockdale County Public Schools Foundation will recognize our twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Reach Georgia Scholars.
All right. Well, good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oates, members of the board, cabinet, and all of our guests tonight. Once again, I'm thrilled to present our next cohort of Reach Georgia Scholars. The first year that we started doing this and partnered with the state was the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. So this makes our seventh cohort of students and we've had two graduating classes so far, which is awesome. So it's been twenty-one students total that have moved through Reach. That accounts also for two that transferred out of the district, but they were picked up in, in the next district as a Reach scholar. And then we received two students from other districts and we put them into that, their particular Reach cohort groups. So we're thrilled just to have so many students receiving all this extra support. And I want to give a special recognition and thanks to the Rockdale County Public Schools Foundation. We have three members here tonight. We have Susan Paul, oh, I'm sorry, we have more than that. We have Susan Paul Smith, Katie Zeradnik, Winston Neal, and then Cindy Ball and Heather Duncan are on there as well. So thank you for their support because it's with their financial support that we are able to provide this for these students. So we really, really appreciate that. All right. So our three students tonight were nominated and chosen to participate in the Reach program, which stands for Realizing Educational Achievement Can Happen. It's a mentorship and scholarship program that begins in the eighth grade and provides Reach scholars with the academic, social, and financial support needed to graduate from high school, gain access to college, and achieve post-secondary success. Upon graduation from high school, meeting all requirements, scholars are awarded up to ten thousand dollars toward the cost of attendance at a Georgia Hope-eligible post-secondary institution. So quite a, a nice honor there. All right. So I would love to start out with our first student who is from Memorial Middle School. Thank you for coming, Mr. Davis, by the way. William Nozart, come on up, William. So let me tell you a little bit about William. So some of the activities he's involved in are band and STEM and outside of school. He is in Sunday, he participates in Sunday School activities. For awards and honors, he has been Star Math Distinguished, Top Score Math in Reading, Certificate of Excellence, High Growth Star Math and Reading. And he would like to attend an Ivy League school or a school for technology. or a school for technology to study software and computer programming. Yes. So a couple of things that were mentioned by his references, academics and community members. They described William as brilliant, lovable, and extremely focused. He's always researching and applying his acquired knowledge. He's thirsty for knowledge and will make a difference in this world.
That's awesome, William.
All right. Now, if you don't mind just standing up here, and then we'll go through our next two. So next, from Conners Middle School, I'd like to invite Devon Sims, or Swims, I'm sorry. Welcome, Devon. All right. So a little bit about Devon. He is involved in FBLA Volleyball Art Club and Book Club. He has received, or he's been on the AB Honor Roll. He's received Distinguished on Math Star and Proficient on ELA Star. He would like to attend Yale and study human rights and get a JD degree. It's awesome. Some of the things that his references mentioned were that he is outgoing and helpful. He will take the initiative to help you. He's a frequent patron of the CMS Media Center, so he likes books. You demonstrate a strong drive to establish yourself as a leader. You seek opportunities to serve and better yourself. You ask questions and you try to learn. You're very responsible, an excellent communicator, and a wonderful student.
Excellent job, Devon.
And is Ayana here? Yeah, great. I thought that was you.
Okay.
All right. Also from Conners Middle School, our next student is Ayana Loudon. And she mentioned that she is involved in volleyball art club, National History Month, and gardening club. She's been on the AB Honor Roll, awards for milestones, and a certificate for, is that spelling? I believe, or helping. Oh, helping at your old camp. Got it. Okay. She would like to attend Yale or Harvard and study. She hasn't quite decided. She's between dermatology, design, law, and chemistry, but she's leaning toward dermatology. And her references said that she's very self-motivated, very well-disciplined, academically sound in all content areas, well-rounded, and her performance is exceptional. Her community reference said she works hard to achieve any goal, and she'll continue to try no matter the difficulty. She's very driven and will be guaranteed to give 110%. So congratulations, Ayana. All right. So we're going to get some pictures. So family members, please come up as well. I'll let Ms. Kim kind of direct how you want to do those photos. And then Dr. Oates and Chairwoman Brown, we'd love to have you for those as well. And if members of the RCPS Board would like to come up, please be part of that picture. Okay. Okay. Let's do Board and Foundation first, and then we'll have families join. Okay.
Good evening. Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Board members, Dr. Oates, and my executive cabinet friends. We're just delighted to be with you tonight. I'm going to give you a brief update on some projects we've been doing, working on, but primarily, a lot of work got accomplished over our December break and into the first of this year. Rockdale County High School flooring, if you've been in the front area there, we had a request from our principal with the carpets there. So we put in some tile. Looks very good. Over at the Rockdale County High School, I've shared with you that we've done all the middle school and high school tennis courts, and they're completed. That's a shot at Rockdale County High School. Here's a shot at Salem's. Couple months back, y'all approved doing Salem and Heritage. Those are total refurbishing. That we're doing those, where our goal is to have them completed by the time the tennis season starts this year. So they're working hard and diligent on that, and we're very thankful for that. Over at Hightower, we have, on the left, is the picture of the carpet that we're tearing out of that gym. And we have a new product that we're working on. It's Shaw Rex Court. It's our Rec 60 flooring. It's got a foam backing. It's got a nice wood shine to it at the top. It's a layered piece of material they put on there. So it's a new thing for us in Rockdale. And we anticipate testing it out, and if it's a good prototype, it works very well. We will be putting that in our other elementary gyms when time comes to replace those. Over at Memorial Middle School, we've done some retiling of classroom floors. At Salem High School, just had a great presentation by Dr. Price. Appreciate all the hard work he's doing there. So they're trying to put a baseball team together, and we are And we are refurbishing that baseball field. This is work that's going on over the last about six weeks. This is a, with, besides the weather we had last Tuesday, this is a shot of it. They've been using the field for practice and getting ready, and our goal is to have it totally ready for the baseball season. Re-roof over 954, Transplaced Operations Area Offices, the breezeway there, classrooms, and then the old boardroom that Georgia Military College is using. We're making good progress on that now that we've got started. Two Fridays ago, Dwight decided, he was excited about no leaks in his text of the building, took down all the old tile, and we sprayed the place, and then came Tuesday, the monsoon, and he found out he's got just one or two more leaks to work on, but they're coming along good. There's one of our new buses in service. He has some information for you on our buses, that's important. February 1st, we should have eight more of our 72, 72-passion buses. This is the last of the 24 that we've ordered through, through the Department of Education. And then on March the 6th, we should get six passenger buses. Those are the first ones we have, the ARC G dot grant, first of 18. And then on March 18th, this year, if, with FY '24 money that the state gave us, we're using that money to buy four specially equipped buses, and those are due in on March 18th. And then our second batch of buses from ARC G dot should be here on July 3rd. Now, I'm not holding my breath on those dates, but we at least have a date in, that we've been given, and we need those buses desperately in our fleet to address all the shortages we have with just having good buses and quality buses. I will say this about G dot, we, the third contract's up, I will bring to you, I'm waiting for them to do their review. I mentioned to you, we're going propane buses versus diesel, so they're doing some study they have to do that, I said, you know propane's cleaner than diesel, but they got to go through their, their drill. But before the end of the summer, I hope to have those, the last batch ordered. That's some work for our CMAR project at Sims, got some HVAC and sitting tiles down there. Hightower, again, same thing's going on at both schools. And we've got some work done over the holidays that we didn't anticipate getting done. I don't think Sims will be completed this summer due to getting some parts in, but the Hightower should be completed. Memorial Middle School, put a new floor in there. It looks great. We also put holes for the volleyball poles, and so as they move forward with volleyball games in the middle school, they have that. ABM Constodial Services, we got 20 S, eight S twenties, twenty eights, so I think it was four each. New equipment there that has landed in our schools. Over the break, they did the five-point clean, they normally do. The big thing that I asked them to do was do, was spray all of our buildings, all of our rooms, every touch point with disinfectant, and that was accomplished over break to slow down some of the flu stuff we had going on. Here's some shots over at Magnet, they did a good job cleaning that up. The Magnet Center there, here's a picture before and after of the floors they're doing there. Appreciate the work they're doing. And this is over at Rockdale County High School. Memorial Middle School, these are the primary areas where we had some big concerns and needs. If we were pushing them to get those things done, and they have done the, an excellent job with that. Now, I am meeting with the, we're supposed to meet this week with the weather that we had, the president over K-12. We're going to be meeting next week. I do have some concerns. We just voted, you voted to approve them last June, I believe it was. Gave them another extension, but we're reviewing that year by year, right? And if they're not making the grade we want, then we will have to go fishing. Put another ramp in over at the Rockdale Tech. Salem High School, this was a scout, boy scout, Eagle Scout, excuse me, project back in the day. And Dr. Price called me up one day, says, anything we can do to the safety? So we came out and put semen in, and we're cutting the curb across into the parking lot for our students. And that's it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Field.
With all that cold, we have adequate heated air on all our buses.
Yes, we do. Now, HVAC and heat or air, cool air on buses, they got to be rolling to make it happen. And, and I've always said HVAC is, in winter, summertime, air conditioning is a great tool to have, but with short routes, and we are under the ARC, we don't run our buses in idle at the schools, so the benefit is not as great until they take a trip, but we still have airflow on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hall?
All righty, good evening to Madam Chair Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, and board members, and cabinet members. I'll be going over the final financial report for, for the month of December, as well as the SPOS report for December. Let me bring glasses. You say something? All righty, the revenue for December, 73.9 million. The revenue year-to-date is 135.7 million, 67.9% of our budget. Last December, we received 62.4 million, 120.9 million year-to-date, which was 66.8% of our budget. Expenditure, 17.4 million, year-to-date, 103.6 million, which is 50.5% of our budget. And last week, I kind of explained why we were over a little bit there. Last December, we expended 15.7, 91.8 million year-to-date, which was 49.8% of our budget. Outstanding incomers is $1,971,354. Fund balance at the end of December, approximately 68.4 million. Last year, we had approximately 67.7 million. Asset, 68.4, fund balance is 68.4 million. SPOS 5, SPOS 5 is complete. The revenue we received from SPOS 5 is 105.7 million. We've expended 85.6 million so far, and the current balance since SPOS 5 is 20.1 million. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Dr. Oates?
Madam Chairman, I don't have any updates for this evening.
Oh, good. Please review the information, financial information that Mr. Hall has uploaded under the information section. The board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in the month of December. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. There is no old business, and there, there is no new business. Last week, the board voted to place the action items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda?
Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries forward, and do we have any opposed? Let me see your hands. We have three opposed. The motion carries four to three. Okay, there is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
Second.
Motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. Jones. All in favor? Motion carries.